I'm waiting in there with Bert, one of my pet dogs, and with Tito, the dog I told you about, the red and short rat here. He's very smart and some of you, most of you in this room are sitting here with all his tricks in person. So I know that. But we think that maybe today about the way that I started out with each of our four classes, he told them allowing me to see before of the class this morning. And we've talked about making that positive for extended community that we love. We all recognize that we have problems and we can either let our problems make us better or bitter. And what we do with our problems, how we handle them, okay, for both is a great place to be, to live, to start businesses, to raise a family. The other side is what we should do. And in my opinion, and all of these people, the 553 people who have liked this page and keep up with what's going on, that is to try to become sort of adoptable animals. So we don't think that every single dog is adoptable and there are all times when dogs have to euthanize if they're sick or they're not safe. And I'm the first one to say, having I wrestle, we had a guy, someone looking at one of our dogs that was yappy from day one and I go up to take the picture and he knew that when he got out of camp, he's got a bite and he went and went and thought it would be adopted because we didn't want to say. And that was one of the last two dogs that was euthanized and that was on the secondary list. So thank you for what you're doing and thank you for the time.
Mr. Kimbrough, on behalf of the city of Winnebago, we thank you so much that word would be difficult to express just how much we appreciate the effort that you have just stepped out on your own and did. How much you've helped the city. On behalf of the city of Winnebago, I would like to say thank you very much.
And Mayor, I can't take all the credit because there are people in this room that I've called. Mark Couch is back here. I've called him, I've called Kayla France, these people, Natalie Gia, my niece, my other niece, other people who couldn't meet here, it's not just me. I just have the biggest mouth.
One grass fire in town, two out of town, eleven in a year. Alarm at two in town, five in a year. Those were weather-related alarms abroad. One rescue call, two this year. Five service calls, ten from a year. And service calls include Washington street dogs, patrol, water lines, repair, such as that. Had the materials, there's one that's a fire line in town, years ago. Eighteen in town calls and five out of town in the calls. It's thirty-five calls last month, year to date. Nineteen calls, fifty-four total calls, year to date. Chief Thompson, that and Fire Marshal's office worked an arson case of which the guy responsible for burning trailers did admit that arson was worked by Rick Abbott from State Fire Marshal's office. Rest was laid by Chief Thompson, police officer. We appreciate his help with that. And we have ongoing training. We're doing a full part of training session with LSU. We've already completed two nights, we've got two more days to show. And we also have arson investigation class coming up on Thursday. I have two. I believe that's about all of that.
Thank you, Chief. We've heard Chief Ford, where is your pleasure?
My name is Jeff.
You probably move to the second hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, I think unanimously approved. Police Chief, mother of police chief number.
Mother of police department started February 21st, 2012, March 19th, 2012. Criminal charges, we made thirty-nine arrests for the month. The high of those, the most arrests, we ended stop, we opened up different stores in town, followed by simple battery. Total, we made three charges for the year. On the traffic charges, we will give you four citations for the month. Took the high of that, eleven speeding tickets, who are all, eleven speeding tickets for our schools on, we did visit, they don't have a porch, come to town by the high school, with access to speaking, followed by gorgeous, they're placed in town. We were fifteen accidents for the month on major highways, nine parking hospitals toward the border. Took five hundred forty-one calls for this month. Also, the rate of drug, we're seeing an increase in calls due to the weather's brought in, children start getting back, getting back outside. As a result of that, we had another problem, somebody made a move to spend more time there trying to tell us before it's too big a problem. Besides, we can see the sign, things good. We have had some burglaries and somebody made a move, well, history long time ahead, but they did a big of burglars due to the same where charge was enough to get lost. It is something we see on the database where we're not going to be broken into for a safe or damages, they're not locked in vehicle.
Thank you, Chief. You've heard Chief Ford, where is your pleasure?
My name is Jeff.
Proper move and second. In favor, raise your right hand. Let the record reflect unanimously approved. Community Center report.
We had from February five events, two of which have, well, five K events, two of which have not happened yet. If we temple Mike Franklin, Shawnee Jones, the home fires workshop, we still do it in the lobby cotton, two of which have not happened yet. We also have a gas here Thursday at six o'clock. It's a retirement reception for Mrs. Rose Williams Gray for her thirty-two years of dedicated service. At 6:00 PM here in the J. Kimball Memorial Center, we'd like to invite council as well as the attorney and everyone else. That's it, and I have my time.
I have a question, looking at two proposals that is set up for the community center. I understand that it is also the same organization, both in the morning and also in the evening?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right there, huh? I understand that the proposal that this individual has, it's a religious organization that is having a program in the morning and then also in the evening. Are you aware of that proposal? Or are they renting that?
Again, that has not happened yet.
It has not happened yet. And I was wanting to know how do we, how is that adjusted? Is that, do they consider that a morning event or is that considered depending on the number of hours? Because they're going to tie the center up for that morning, that morning activity and then that afternoon activity. So is that just considered as one activity?
When we rent it out, we rent it out for the entire day.
Okay, so you're saying, and how many hours are we talking about? When you rent it out, how many hours are considered under that, under that 3:50 or that?
Whenever we give them the key, usually about seven, eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay, and then if?
And then they have the center until 2:00 AM. 2:00 AM, our lights have to be on for whatever party or whatever it is. And the center has to be cleaned by 12:00 noon in the day.
Okay, so they actually have 24 hours, is what you're saying? If they get it, or well, they get it at seven and they don't check it until 12:00? The key is clearly in the offices of the individual that rented. May I pursue the same? So, is that the way it's supposed to be set up?
It's set up where that when they rent it, we don't rent it by the hour, the committee. This is what the committee agreed on, we rent it by the day, $350 for one day's rental. That's how we set it up, we not, we have, we don't rent it by the hours like that.
And that was twelve, that was originally 12 hours, right? That was originally 12 hours of usage that the individual would be entitled, would be entitled to, right?
That's not what the contract says.
What, okay.
Contract says one, one.
So we changed the contract several times and I need to know.
This the last one that you have, the revised version that I gave you?
I was saying, 24, okay, all right, I'll just have a little bit.
Okay. I have another one for you.
You've heard the community center report, where is your pleasure? I'd like to look at your set of reports. Proper move and second hall in favor, raise your right hand. Let the record reflect. It was unanimously approved. Economy and Development Report.
Mayor, would you like to say something?
Well, I think, I think more than just an introduction anyway. Mayor, council members and distinguished guests, you know, it's certainly an honor and privilege for me to have the opportunity to come back to the city and represent you as the economic development director. I feel like that I have some assets and resources to help the economy of our community. It's going to be a united effort between our city government, our parish government, and residents of our community. We cannot do it alone, but we can collectively make a change, you know? And I would ask everyone to join together in unison to make this happen. You know, we've gone through a lot of things. We're going through a tremendously bad economic period of time right now. And we've all felt the results of that. But through these efforts that we're going to put forward, we hope that hopefully we'll be able to change that. I will not make any promises that we're going to pour something out of the sky today, you know? My dad always said, "Son, don't ever count your chickens before the eggs hatch." So that's what we would do. When they're, when we put those eggs in the incubator, we know what's going to happen and we will reveal that information. And we will work with each one, council members, the mayor, and everyone else that is involved to make sure you stay abreast of what happens. Thank you very much. And if I can ever be of any assistance, anyone who'd like to talk to me, feel free to do so. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to congratulate you on your choice from former mayor Carl up here for your economic development. He's a go-getter in Baton Rouge and he's a go-getter in Washington DC. I'm speaking from experience, I've been there with him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Money Finance Report.
Okay. We're at sixty-seven percent of our budget right now. There haven't been any things since last month, any major expenses or anything like that, no major revenue either. Our total general fund revenue is at seventy-seven percent, so that's a little bit of low. There are some areas that are, that are low. Do you see recreation in Poole? That'll pick back up in a couple of months. The license, the occupational license shows 71%. We should have collected most of it by now, a lot of it has not been deposited, Rosie does that and she's just coming in, since she's been sick, she comes in once a week. She took a lot of that home today to work on, so that'll, will show a big increase in that next month. She just hasn't actually deposited the money in the bank, but we received a lot of our occupational license. Our expenses, they all, I mean, there's been fees that have been high, but they, listen, our total general fund expenses were at 68%, that's good. And if we include our capital outlays at 75%, but we did have grand income of $191,000 kind of offset that a little bit. Sales tax collections are at 66%. Our utility system fund is revenue 65, the expenses are, they're pretty low, they're at 58%, so they're under budget. I think we do, the chief does have a letter that he's presented. Have you given it to him? We will need it this time for y'all to vote on whether or not to increase his budget. He is, I think about 20% over budget, has been for a couple of months. And by law, if he's over 5%, he has to ask for an increase, so. Have you talked to him, you got anything to say on that?
Right away you go, but one question, total capital project, say it at 402%. Got to be in there somewhere.
Yeah, we talked about that last time.
Probably 675,000 and then actual 269,000 or something.
Well, we see all of these actual expenses for capital outlay projects, we did not budget, so that's why that looks like that. And we budgeted 67, $67,000 in capital outlay, but we've actually spent 269,000. Now, $191,000 of that has his grand money, that's towards that. And that's why it shows 402%. We budgeted 67,000, but we've actually spent 269,000. So we spent 402%. And it's just a formula that calculates that budget. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. So we've got 191,000, we're going to move back towards that, right?
Towards the 269. There's probably a couple out there that we, probably some in that airport maybe that we have not received grant money from. I think I actually received a check in from the mayor of the Nathan's Bay, Louisiana for about maybe 7200 dollars that doesn't show up in here. That does look fine with the formula, but that's why that is. You have to move. That's what needs to.
Also, council, also council, sorry. At this time, I'd like to write for you to expoliate a number of too much operating expenses due to this, the last cost of gas. It was something we could experience, it's a big fiscal budget, the gas is a factor now in my budget as far as controlling the city.
Chief, do you have any additional documentation to support your, your, for gas prices and so forth?
What I have, councilman, is the months, November, December, and January, these are the expense of the whole department. And you'll see that gas is the number of expenses we have. Also, for the last week, I contacted the gas dealer and since the year started up to now, gas was getting seen more per gallon. About 27 people total were part of three on patrol and two in transportation. So if at once in a time, there are five people totaling over 200 people out here or he's sitting here in the seat. There's just a way to cut back. If you look at the month report, they gave this month, we took, right, the last nine calls, just obtained two calls that came in, we're now doing one, or just doing the main telephone line. That's not talking about the amount of time in and out of communities that we serve.
You can hear you.
Yes, I'm sorry, I do have, this I'd like to share with you. What those are the last three, the last three months to show you what the fuel rate's been. And what I've done is took that from the, from the manual that I give for Rock for each month. Also, this month, if you look at this month, it's right in 31, also, this is the best one. Should be on the line.
How important is it that we, when we make a decision on this tonight?
I mean, it's been over for three or four months already, so.
Can you walk around, chief, and do the review or something?
I just don't want to be on violation because if you turn to page five and I will sit here and look for the night, you can just look at the fuel we have for this month and also look and see that what, what we're spending, over 90% of budget is going to gas because everything else is just the most handled, of course, by everything else that we've been doing to cut back on.
Violation, Chief, the club said we got issues for our mission, they're putting their boss in there?
I didn't say violation, but you know, we are aware that we are behind like that. And this is something that could not have been seen back in the budget was made from talking with the Scrabble last week. Gas expenses are over to at least four hours a gallon before the summer's over with some say five. Now, he did bring to five dollars a gallon, he did say four, and so were four dollars. And so, each, each gallon of gas that we do purchase, we're going to have a budget because this was something that we could not see back in June of last year.
So the amount that you have here that you're requesting for, if the amendment is concerned with budget, is that all of you would love to actually finish out the fiscal year?
That is, the amount that you're looking at, the amount that I made with Rock City, she helped you come up this year.
That's based on the average of what he's been spending so far and then just took an average of what he's spent so far and then just averaged the number of months after the year.
No, 23 is what, 23 dollars is what he's going to leave in all of the.
Based on what he's spent so far.
I think there's fuel in there.
That includes everything.
That's everything.
We're going to have a catfish festival and we're now going to have a fair all in one month, we're going to have a bunch of open.
We have a bunch of open to it.
That doesn't, that's not, that's not.
That's not overtime, so we would have, though, councilman, with the fair coming, that's going to mean that we have, our vehicles on the highway with the white burning, so the gas will be burning.
It's only your operating expenses?
It's only operating expenses. But also, what Rock City said, there will be additional overtime expenses to bring officers out to the, to the fair to make sure, to ensure safety.
You're talking about all the $8,000 for a month? It's essentially $7,000 plus, $7,000 plus for all in one month. For the rest of the month? What do we have, amendment, the budget now, in that fiscal category? $8,000?
$8,000.
If we take this letter on the advisory, look at the end of the month bill, see where we are, and if the next, if the next meeting makes a motion, we make a decision. I'm simply saying, we'll take this letter on the advisory and the calculations that we have, the use of fuel man card, and based on what we've got, we have enough security out for the rest of this month, protect it to the next, to the next council meeting, and then we take a look at this and I don't think it will run out of form. And I don't think it will be in violation because you've already brought our attention by way of the job. But we do need to look at and possibly do some additional studies and look at this and make a decision whether to do a min or not do a min, definitely.
How much is that, boss?
$8,000.
$8,000. First of the month, I would add, if you need to be, you can make sure.
That was suggested on the, on the proposal for the amendment.
Just to make the, either base it or not make it.
At the next meeting, this, this still put us on, in fact, once again, we'll take the information that we have here on advisory, we'll look at it, and just do what we're going to do, and then make a decision one way or the other.
Get that right and put it on.
And then put it on the amendment. That's just a suggestion because this was not on the agenda.
Yeah, put that on.
It wasn't on the agenda, it was just, it was just brought to our attention in addition to this report. Actually, it wasn't brought into the report, we asked it before the financials.
But you give a, is another question in the report?
The letter. See, we had, we had already voted on the report, man. We had already voted on the report, remember, we had already taken the votes on the report, but it was a dead issue. The report, yeah. This came up during the financials, so if they come up with a report, then it would look like this, you have it too, or something like that. But you're not advised because you have the letter already on the suit, much longer than suit.
Well, this is that you, $7,000.
$7,000.
$7,000. Number's been about 6291.
You got eight, you got eight pre-dill?
I'm going to pull it in, I, I need it up.
Oh, buddy, it's pretty good. It's actually less than, than regular. There, there, there about 105, down people coming. Less than. What is your pleasure on financial report?
I'm going to accept the financial report as it is presented.
Excuse me?
I'm going to accept the financial report as it is presented.
Then proper move to the house.
Then probably move to the second.